Let's call the meeting to order. Welcome. We are at the City of Marshalltown Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date is February 10, 2020. The time is 5:30. I need to start the meeting by reading a notice to the public that the Mayor and Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less so that others may be given an opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the Mayor and City Council in general and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Very good. Full house. Onto item E, which is Mayor, Council, and Administrator comments. I would like to recognize Bill Martin for having the idea to have a recognition that we had earlier today to shout out to the people that have been volunteers for so many years on commissions and boards here with the city. And so, thanks for doing that, Bill. I know you had church obligations, so you weren't able to be here yourself personally, but it was a nice event for the people that were able to make it. And those included Keith Boenquist, five years on planning and zoning; Nancy Harris, five years on the Civil Service Commission; Bob Wenner, five years on the Board of Adjustment. He's also a former City Consular. Julie Squires, 20 years on the Fisher Community Center Board of Trustees. Leon Lammers, 16 years on the Solid Waste Commission, and he began that before he became a City Consular. Norm Bach, 15 years with the Investment Advisory Board. Sharon Greer, from 1995 to 2019, on the Planning and Zoning Commission. David Norris, 40 years on the Fisher Community Center Board of Trustees. So, how about a round of applause for those folks.[161.34][161.34](Applause). We're also looking for two people to be on the Waste Management Board and two people to be on the Fisher Community Center Board. So, if you or you know someone else that might be eligible and interested, we could use some volunteers for those. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention tonight was Tom and Mary Wordsburger are two really good volunteers in Marshalltown. When we got to town and we were going to light the courthouse, Tom volunteered his time to figure out where to put the lights and didn't charge anything for his architectural services. He's the one that built, he designed the Raycom building here to withstand an EF5 tornado, and it didn't miss a single transmission. Mary is the Chair of the Trails Inc. Board. She had a national position with the YWCA, and I just got to meet their granddaughter today. Cute little kid. So, thank you to the Wordsburgers and others like them that keep this town going by volunteering. Let's see, onto the, is there a report on the board of vacancies, or does that cover that? Your Honor?
We just thought that, in talking about the volunteer recognition, it'd be nice to post some that we have on there. And the one that you, that you didn't mention, Your Honor, is the Library Board of Trustees now has a vacancy that we're taking applications for.
Thank you. And I should have asked if there are any other Consular comments or Administrator comments. Ms. Martin?
Yes, Your Honor. This City of Marshalltown and all its people are proud of its volunteers. That's shown up time and time again. From this seat, anyway, we're proud of our volunteers for the city and the boards and commissions. They give up their time, they volunteer, they bring their expertise, energy, and input that is so valuable to the Council as we make decisions. So, right now, I'm looking at the number of 89 on our boards and commissions. Seventy of those are filled, so we have some vacancies. I just want to underscore what the Mayor had said. We thrive with our volunteers. And certainly, it's a matter of pride for the City of Marshalltown to enjoy their experience and volunteerism. So, thank you again.
Thank you for that, and thank you for getting this ball rolling. We will be honoring the people with five, 10, 15-year increments and that sort of thing at the end of this, next year and for years to come. Madam Administrator, would you remind people about our budget hearing?
Yes. Next Monday at noon here in City Council Chambers, we will have our first of what will be two budget hearings on our maximum property tax levy. So, this information has been published on all of our city websites and social media pages, as well as in the Times Republican. And we're, City Hall is technically closed because it is President's Day for an in-service day, but we will have the State Street doors open at 11:30 a.m. for people to attend.
Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. One of the Consulars has asked that we pull item four from it. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda involving the first three items on it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second? Thank you. Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That's carried. Madam Clerk, would you read those items, please?
Approve the City Council minutes for January 27th and February 3rd, and the bill lists an amount of $883,580.76. Approve resolution approving applications for tax abatement and new construction industrial property tax exemptions. Resolution between the United States of America and City of Marshalltown for rehabilitation of a federal flood control work.
Thank you. And then, since we pulled item four, let's go to that one next. Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Resolution authorizing the transfer of insurance proceeds remaining from the senior citizens' building demolition project to Fund 383 for the Coliseum renovation.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second? Any discussion up here?
Your Honor, I was asked by a couple different citizens to pull this from the consent agenda. They wanted the opportunity to talk one more time about the senior citizen funds. So, I felt it was my duty to ask, to give it one more chance to talk about this. So, that's, I just want to make it clear that's why that was pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion up here? Public discussion?
Anna Wolvers, Marshalltown resident in Ward Two. I know several people on social media were active about this topic. We've been vocal about it before. We've asked why it wasn't secured before the building was even tore down. Seniors want places to go and permanent residency for their recreation. They're longtime taxpayers of this city. They built this city. And we were under the impression from the several conversations I was a part of before it was tore down that that money would be set aside for a potential future building for them. I know they were also told they could originally go into the Coliseum, so that's why it would make sense for that money to go to the Coliseum. However, their needs were not met, and their Board was not happy with that proposal. So, they are now currently in the Fisher Community Center. But it's my understanding from several of them that utilize it, that that's not long-term beyond like two years, and that's not what they were, under the impression that this money was going to be used for.
Any other public comment? Let's do the roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Onto item G, which is motions. Would you read the first and only one?
To approve the tobacco permits for the Dollar General for this year remaining through June 30, 2020, and for the next year ending June 30, 2021. This is for the building that was previously occupied by Family Video.
Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto item H, reports. And the first one is, and only one, is the ISU Trees Report.
Yes, we have Gary Fulton, who is with Trees Forever and is going to give an introduction of Mimi Wagner in her presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, Gary Fulton, Trees Forever, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mimi Wagner, Professor of Landscape Architecture at Iowa State University. Her interests are community ecology and landscape restoration, and she and a number of her students did a project last fall on our tornado impact area in Wards One and Two. So, I'll turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you, Margaret.[667.04][667.04](Applause). It's my pleasure to be here this evening, and I want to, I have 10 minutes, which for a faculty member is incredibly short amount of time to speak. But I can talk for hours and hours about this work. But what you're seeing today is the result of about 75 students that, of mine, that, and there have been more students of other faculty that have focused on this particular thing that we're talking about are trees and tornado damage to the existing street trees in particular. But we came to Marshalltown after the tornado and looked for ways to do things that would give back to the community. Students want to learn by being out in the field and doing. They don't necessarily value learning sitting in a classroom, reading about other people who have gone and done things. So, the work that you're going to see today is, that is it. And these are mostly undergraduate, but partly graduate students. But this is what we were really looking at, is working with the Trees Forever Committee and some of the city staff, Kristen in particular, the city horticulturist. We became really interested in the residential streets in the most heavily damaged part of the community. And even though the city had tree data, we decided, because we're learning, that we would collect our own tree data. And just the terrace trees, what we were trying to understand is exactly how many trees could we identify of public that were destroyed, and where were those trees located? And that's really how it started out. So, this fall, these 12 students collected 749 tree locations. And I'm going to show you the map in just a second of where we worked. But a little over half were living, and the other half, as you know, because you've heard about this, that were actually already dead and gone, but the stumps were there. And what I want to point out, one of the things, this map is from Ward One. It's a couple-block area. Let's see, North Fourth, I don't know, that would be North Sixth on the other side. Yeah, Woodbury and...
Seventh.
Okay, great. So, the top is the canopy, so that the overstory trees, the tall trees that provide all the shade for houses and parking lots and lawn areas. Prior to the storm, the green areas on the top were shaded from the overstory canopy. Post-tornado, we actually mapped this by hand because there wasn't satellite imagery available, but post-tornado, this is what remains. And the rest of the work I'm going to show you is all just street trees. It's just trees in the terrace. But what this really just reminds us is that these houses have lost an enormous amount of cover. And trees are not just trees. And I started the beginning of this project as a landscape architect, thinking trees are just trees, but they're actually not. They're a whole lot more. They provide climate control for the people who live near them. They provide the most readily available form of urban nature, which are birds. If you don't have trees, you're not going to have birds. And they provide benefits to health, benefits of economic value to properties because they're present. And through the last year worth of this work, the students have really come to understand this, and that's the reason we wanted to show this information for you. So, these are your residential neighborhoods. The darkest green is multifamily. The middle green is single-family. And obviously, the tornado path. This is your shape file. It shows the damage by parcel, and the darker the color, the more severely damaged that property was. These are the areas we could map. And obviously, we missed Sue's neighborhood. We missed a little bit of Ward One, and well, I don't know, does that go into Ward Two a little bit, too? We couldn't quite close that gap. We just ran out of manpower and we ran out of weather. It was freezing cold and sleeting, and so, we gave up. But we mapped by walking and very much in the same way the Trees Forever volunteers were trained to do, mapping with GPS, every tree location, recording the species, recording the size, and the stumps as well. So, here's the result, the resulting maps. And they show you, the orange dots are living trees. The black dots were stumps that were present this fall. And then, you can see the tornado path and our limits. And this is interesting. It's starting to become interesting, and as an academic, we like to just, I could look at maps all day long and talk about maps all day long, but this doesn't really mean a lot to me because I can't really quantify it. And so, we're going to jump back in just a second to that scale, but I wanted to show you, for that same area in Ward One, just a close-up of what this looks like and how many trees were actually destroyed. So, black is gone, and the orange ones remain. Just a massive, a massive amount that was affected. So, we, using a student who's really good at GIS, we were able to create this density map. So, that's based on the street, and it's based on how many trees are on the street. And this was prior to the tornado. This does not take into account the dead trees. But that could be the next step, now that I thought of that. What it does is tells you how many trees per block, if you put both sides together. And the greener it is, the more trees there are on that block, and red is zero to one. And when we saw this pattern emerge, where we had these clusters, some clusters of a lot of trees, and we had clusters of areas without a lot of trees, we became really interested in that as learners. And that's when I reached out to Sue, because as the Ward One Consular, a lot of the red area, not all of it certainly, is in her, is in her ward. And the next thing we did is just put the census demographic, the percent Hispanic or Latino, in the 2010 census. So, the darker that block color, the higher percentage is Hispanic, according to 2010. And obviously, things have changed. It's been 10 years now. But when we start to overlay that, then it just provides, it provides a little more context. And working with the Trees Forever people, and you are so lucky to have such a dedicated group of volunteers, they are so patient with me and with my students, and they are always, always really excited to meet with the students, to hear their ideas, to answer questions. We wanted to bring this back to the community, and we wanted you to know that this is provided. You know, we didn't come here to understand existing tree patterns and the distribution of public resources. In this case, it's not city money that's planting the trees, it's outside money that's coming in. But it's really helped us learn that this is a pattern everywhere in the country, that low-income neighborhoods are almost always disadvantaged in terms of how many public tree resources are established there. And I wanted you to know that we are continuing this semester, where my students are preparing some site-scaled plans to show how many trees could be placed in Ward One on these streets. And just to give the Trees Forever people a little more help in terms of perhaps gathering the funds necessary, we also know that the planting system, the way of getting at the free trees, is clearly not working equally for everybody in the community, that some people are able to access that system and get the free trees, fill out the application. They want to, they trust the entity, and they are able to fill that procedure, and other neighborhoods are clearly not. And so, it raises this really great opportunity statewide and nationally for us to take a look at this, because, as I said, trees are not just trees. And that's all I have. Do you have questions? Anybody?
Any questions or comments up here? I keep looking at that fake check in the back from the class, the class of, was it 68?
69.
69. They've raised an awful lot of money.
That's what I hear.
They have enough money to replace every tree that we lost and add trees at the Veterans Home and at the schools.
Could you introduce me to them?
If I give you my card, you email me, I'll get the guy that's in charge of that.
Well, it's just, you have such a great opportunity. And I want you to know, these 75 students that have come through Marshalltown, and I know this was a gut-wrenching experience for you, the tornado, but you have made a difference in their lives. The things they have learned, because they did them and saw them and listened and spoke with residents that lived here and volunteers, you have made a difference in your life, in their lives, and you've made a difference in the way that I practice, too, as a landscape architect.
Dr. Wagner? Do you see a future project with future students, a reforestation plan?
I would love to. I am actually going back into the private sector. I'm like half in the private sector already. But, but I don't, I totally see, that's the, the plans we're creating for this semester will be a conceptual version of that.
And you'll report back to us with this great plan, how we can...
Absolutely. Well, I'll report back to Trees Forever if you want me to come back. I would love to come back. Yeah. I mean, I love Marshalltown, and I live in Ames. I'm not that far away, and my office is in Des Moines now, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Mimi. She contacted me back in the fall and shared her, the information that her students had gleaned, and I was just very impressed. That one graphic that you showed first, that showed the canopy over Bromley Street, between Bromley and Woodbury Street, and the fact that after the tornado, it was so much less. And, you know, even this one where it shows a lot of the red, that there weren't a lot of trees, again, there were a lot of them along the alleyway and in the yards that were also lost. So, any way that we can simplify that project with and working collaboratively with the Trees Forever folks, I think that I shared this, actually, she came to the schools to, or to the central office to share her information, and Dr. Shute walked in, and I made him say, "Come in here, you've got to look at this." And he said, "Well, we need to get the school involved and have the, you know, we could have the place to do this, that Woodbury School, and get people who know the community to help with this process." So, I think what, we need to take this work, and it's something that I'm very interested in, putting this together so that we can expand the good work that Trees Forever has started and make it very accessible to areas that can clearly use those trees, but maybe didn't, haven't quite mastered how to access them yet. So, again, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
We want them planted now, but Gary Fulton and our local person did an excellent program at Rotary recently to tell us, "No, we have to stage them in over," it's going to take a number of years so that we don't have all the trees at the same age.
Maybe, maybe, but this part of town has no trees at all. So, it's not exactly the classic situation that you find in urban cities where you do have a lot of trees already and you're worried. I don't know. It's a tough balance, but...
Very informative. Thank you for coming.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you.[1396.12][1396.12](Applause).
Okay. Onto item I, which is resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you read the first one, please?
Resolution ordering construction of the 2019 PCC Patch Repair Project, STR 19002.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Hi, I'm Jay Cook. I'm Civil Engineer II. I have a Public Works Department, Engineering. Basically, we are looking at several different projects going to happen over this next course in the next two to three months. The first one here is being the Patch Repair Project, which is going to include replacement of concrete panels on Lincoln Circle, Lincoln Tower Circle, Marion Street, and 18th Avenue. All of these areas, we're just hitting the worst spots, trying to make some corrections, basically, so that we can get traffic through those areas. But we're looking at a project cost of around $150,000. We anticipate starting April, early May, and being done sometime in June.
Thank you. Any questions or comments up here? Any public comment?
Anna Wolvers, Second Ward resident, again. There's lots of questions about the Lincoln Tower Circle also being a city drive and road, and the use of our city taxpayers' money funding that repair for limited access. People also say, "Try and park on it, and you'll get a ticket because it's private property," when there's thousands of roads in Marshalltown that could use a lot of extra work, like mine, Thomas Drive, that's refilled every three to four months in the winter with potholes.
Thank you. Other public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. One able, would you read the next resolution?
Resolution ordering construction of the South Third Street Bridge Repair Project, STR 18003.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second. That goes to Martin. This discussion or comments up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Before we go, yeah, I had a question. Will this require closure of the bridge, or will it be done while in lanes?
It is our, we are anticipating that it's going to be done under traffic, that we will have land closures, but we will still be able to allow traffic to come through. It does have to be coordinated with the contractor, because the sealant for the entire bridge comes in one long strip, but we're hoping that we can place parts of it, open it up, place the other parts, and open it up. So, I think we're not going to restrict traffic very long or at all. If it does become an issue, we will probably look to push this off to like a weekend-type project where we can lessen the impact to the public.
You have a cost estimate?
Cost estimate is around $114,000.
And Jay?
Yes.
Jay, over here. I saw in your timeline, you're already five days behind. You still feel confident you can get the bids in by March 3rd on your timeline?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you had an end date, and maybe I missed the start date. You had an end date that you wanted it completed by July 1st?
Yes.
What was your start date? I mean, how long of a project is this, that traffic's going to be slow a little bit?
Actual putting the seal in is probably a two- to three-day job. The riprap panel replacements, we're probably talking another two weeks.
So, the whole project's only three weeks and...
Three to four weeks at the most.
Oh, okay.
Pretty, it's actually a pretty simple job.
Other questions or comments at the consult table? Public comment? Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the next resolution, one able.
Resolution approving a contribution of $5,000 to the Marshalltown 4th of July Fireworks Celebration.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second. Let's go with the coach on that one. Any questions or discussion up at the council table?
I need, with your permission, Your Honor, is, can someone bring me up to speed on, is this, have we always done 5,000? How far back does this go? Why did it start? I guess I just need a little history on this, because I'll be honest with you, it's my understanding this is just a committee. This is not an organization that's a 501(c)(3). This, I mean, so, I'm looking down the road. If we have competing committees that want to do fireworks or other events, I mean, are we going to get ourselves into funding both of them? Can someone just bring me and the public up to speed on, I know 5,000 isn't a lot of money, but I don't want to waste a lot of time, but is there anybody that has history on this?
I can, I can give something brief, but I think we need to give you something in writing that would be beyond just a few years. So, the $5,000 that is recommended here is what was contributed for the 2019 Fireworks Celebration. I believe 2018 was 3,000, and I believe 2017 was also $3,000. So, there has been a history of giving, what's ultimately changed from kind of year to, from 2016 to 2017 was the funding source. 2017 was also $3,000. So, there has been a history of giving, what's ultimately changed from kind of year to, from 2016 to 2017 was the funding source. We started using council-designated local option sales tax for this, whereas before it was coming out of the general fund or other sources.
Well, does this go as far back as when fireworks were at the veterans' home, and then moved to the college, and then moved to the fairgrounds? I mean, is this something new, or is this just a routine thing that we do every year? And if it is, let's put it in the CIP.
The request comes in annually from the fireworks committee, and so it's something that we put on here for your consideration. It's really not a capital project, so that's where we wouldn't put it in the CIP, but it is something that's coming forward now. So it would actually be, we'd pay out before the next fiscal year would start. It would be coming out of your council-designated local option sales tax in this fiscal year.
And this money goes 100% to fireworks? Are we paying for the rent of the fairgrounds? Is the county kicking in anything on this?
I don't know the answers to those questions.
How they spend their money. You don't know?
No.
Okay. We don't have any oversight on this? We just write them a check to a committee and...
Correct. We write to the fiscal...
And they buy fireworks, we hope.
We write a check to the fiscal agent for the committee, who I believe is the county. And, yeah, so that's where the money goes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments up here? Public? Sure.
I didn't know there was somebody, well, I didn't know there was somebody here. I'm glad you came up to the mic.
No, that's okay. Luisa Ortega, 2023 Catalina Place from Marshalltown. So first of all, thank you, and I'll make it as brief as possible, because I don't think you were expecting me to speak. But it is, it's been a project, I think, that has been passed down from my understanding. It was Denny Grabenbauer that used to do the Fourth of July fireworks for the city, and it was my understanding at some point that it did belong to the city kind of in some way, and then kind of just got passed down as just a volunteer thing. So, I do request the money, and like she said, last year it was 5,000. We put in a request for grant to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We do some fundraising. We've had JBS do money, the UA, let me see, I have it right here. The radio stations do their free promo. Central, our fairgrounds is the fiscal agent, and they're the ones that are taking care of the money, and that's where people send donations to. And they loan us the fairgrounds, the use of the fairgrounds. The Marshalltown Police Department provides the security. We know we do not get money from the...
The county.
County, yes, sorry. Thank you. But we do end up raising all the money for the fireworks, which I've increased from, we used to purchase 7,000. Last year, we purchased 11,000, and we get 15% for a multiple-year contract. So we ended getting fireworks valued at $13,678.72 with 11,000. And then we hire a band, and then, of course, everything else is just volunteer work, and everything's donated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for doing this again this year.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Roll call.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Carried as well. Thank you. Fifth resolution, please, one able.
Resolution approving a development agreement with Preserving U.S. Inc. for a $75,000 catalyst building grant.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
This one is a little bit confusing with the name on the contract versus the name of the applicant, which was Cohen Esri for the Marshalltown Senior Residences. And so that's how that came before you. Ultimately, their fiscal agent on that project has a different name and a different LLC. So, that's the one little change that's here before you, but this would be a, basically, it was an agreement that you endorsed. The state ultimately came back and said, "Yes," so this would be the final step needed to actually commit those funds from the catalyst building grant to a renovation of the Marshalltown Senior Residences.
Located in the dual Iowa wholesale building.
Did we have the same type of regulations on this that asked that work needed to be started within a year, or were there any conditions tied with this?
Basically, every one of these agreements is going to have our timeline on it for the grant funds, which is by April 2021. So, that's pretty much the only thing. I can't tell you that work has started there. They do have their building permit, and have had it for a while, and so they're doing what they can in the winter months.
Excellent. Thank you.
So this is, this one's no different than the other catalyst grants. This is, they were damaged in the tornado. They want to fix the place up. They scored on their application. They're entitled to the money.
Correct. That was the recommendation of the Grant Review Committee, which went to the state for review.
Other questions or comments of the council? Public? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Carried as well. On to the next resolution, please.
Resolution accepting the placemaking plan for the Iowa River's Edge Trail.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will move to approve.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. So, this has been one of those things that was a pre-tornado thing, then got wrapped up and pushed back a little bit. But the city applied for a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for 25,000, and was successful in getting that, and then received $50,000 from the Martha Island Ty Foundation to put towards another $25,000 in local funds from Hardin County Trails, Inc., and 5,000 from the city to hire RDG Design out of Des Moines to put together a placemaking plan for the Iowa River Trail. And you'll notice the term Iowa River's Edge Trail in there, because this plan does make a recommendation for a rebranding. So, this, what's before you tonight is that we're basically saying that RDG has met the terms of their agreement and has produced the deliverables that are here before you. Your action tonight is not one to pass judgment on the quality of that work, or whether you believe the stuff in there should be implemented. Ultimately, this is going to be something where Trails, Inc., and the Hardin County Trails Commission need to be working together in order to really figure out how to implement these changes together.
Thank you. Sorry. Jessica, if we accept this tonight, where can the public see this plan? Is there a hard copy?
No, there are no hard copies that we have. I need to get these, with these files, obviously, they're available on our website through the Agenda Packet, and then we do have an Iowa River Trail page where I need to get them uploaded on.
Because I know the one is, what, 45 pages? The other one's 99?
Yes.
The appendix was 99.
And then, okay, so we're just, we're just accepting the plan tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the council table? Public comment? Let's vote.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Carried as well. Thank you. Fifth resolution, please, one able.
Resolution approving a development agreement with Preserving U.S. Inc. for a $75,000 catalyst building grant.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
This one is a little bit confusing with the name on the contract versus the name of the applicant, which was Cohen Esri for the Marshalltown Senior Residences. And so that's how that came before you. Ultimately, their fiscal agent on that project has a different name and a different LLC. So, that's the one little change that's here before you, but this would be a, basically, it was an agreement that you endorsed. The state ultimately came back and said, "Yes," so this would be the final step needed to actually commit those funds from the catalyst building grant to a renovation of the Marshalltown Senior Residences.
Located in the dual Iowa wholesale building.
Did we have the same type of regulations on this that asked that work needed to be started within a year, or were there any conditions tied with this?
Basically, every one of these agreements is going to have our timeline on it for the grant funds, which is by April 2021. So, that's pretty much the only thing. I can't tell you that work has started there. They do have their building permit, and have had it for a while, and so they're doing what they can in the winter months.
Excellent. Thank you.
So this is, this one's no different than the other catalyst grants. This is, they were damaged in the tornado. They want to fix the place up. They scored on their application. They're entitled to the money.
Correct. That was the recommendation of the Grant Review Committee, which went to the state for review.
Other questions or comments of the council? Public? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Carried as well. On to the next resolution, one able.
Resolution approving the use of $17,500 of a council-designated local option sales tax to fund a contract for the Marshalltown Housing Initiative.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm going to do just a quick introduction of this, you know, and go back and really bring kind of why this is something for you to consider. You know, a few items down, we have our strategic plan where one goal is devoted to development in Marshalltown with one objective specifically calling out housing. And another area that we have a goal is with partnerships with other entities. And so, this ticks off a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And so I will introduce Lynn Olberding, who is the President and CEO of the Chamber, to tell you more about what it is.
Good evening. So, as you know, the Chamber has done several housing studies, first in 2014, again in 2017, and then an update post-tornado, and found that Marshalltown has gaps in our housing on all levels, all income levels, single-family homes, rentals, and senior living. So, one of the things in the Chamber's work with the Board of Directors was setting some priorities, not only for the upcoming year, but for years to come, and one of those being reducing our commuter rate, understanding that it's far higher than we want it to be of people commuting into Marshalltown to work who obviously aren't living here. So in order for us to reduce the commuter rate, we need to have housing available for those individuals, and so we believe it's important for us to increase our housing stock. We're really looking at this project and the potential in working with McClure Engineering, focusing on single-family homes. We feel that that's a place that we really need to see some growth in our community. So, in the work we're doing, we've done a lot of research in other communities to see what has worked, and we kept coming up with a lot of questions that we just couldn't find answers to. So, what's coming before you is the opportunity to enter into an agreement with McClure Engineering for some housing information that they would pull together for us. Some of those things would include reviewing the inventory of infill and greenfield development sites, looking at the potential residential developers, what's holding them back from coming into Marshalltown, what are those barriers, so helping us identify the barriers to them developing within our community. And then they would take that information and identify concepts that would fit into the city's prioritization of development areas. So they would come in and tell us, "Here are opportunities for what infill sites might look like, not only in maybe a price point, but square footage, what would the layout look like?" So, they're really going to help us provide a comprehensive plan for both infill again and greenfield sites for single-family homes. In addition to that, they're going to make some recommendations on incentive programs that we could look at that would give us the greatest chance of seeing additional developments, residential, excuse me, developments within Marshalltown. So, in all the discussions we had with communities that are doing work and seeing some growth within their housing stock, we really found that it wasn't going to happen if the city wasn't a partner. And so that's why we're coming to you. The agreement with McClure Engineering is $35,000, asking to split that cost with the Chamber and the city, knowing that we need the Chamber, excuse me, we need the city to partner with the Chamber, and showing that this is important for the growth of our community. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Are there any questions up here? Comments? Of course I do. Lynn, now, your goal for housing is how many in how many years?
So, in order to reduce the commuter rate by 50%, which is the Chamber, the goal set by the Chamber Board, that equates to 1,000 housing units. So that's anything that would be an additional housing unit. So that would be, one apartment is a housing unit, single-family homes, and senior residential. So 1,000 over the course of five years.
So, if I did the math right, you're talking about a house being turnkey-ready, four houses a week for five years.
If you were looking at only single-family homes, we are looking at that comprehensive look of, the community needs 1,000 units.
A unit, yeah. So four units a week. So pretty aggressive plan.
Pretty aggressive plan. We want to see, we want to see growth in single-family homes.
Okay. And you know, we talked last week, and we talked about my concerns about other studies that get done, everybody claps their hands, puts it on a shelf, and it collects dust at the library. So actually, tonight, I believe that if we're really going to do this, and even if you don't reach your goal of 1,000 houses, from my math, 40 houses in our share of the property taxes is a break-even for us. So if you just get 40 houses built over five years, we break even on our money. So what I'd like to see us do is not only fund half of your study, but fund tonight, amend the resolution to fund half of the implementation, because I don't want another study that sits on a shelf. If you guys are serious about this and really want to do this, I'm asking the other council members to join with me and say, "We'll pony up another 7,200, and we'll fund it at the level of 24/7, and put the onus back on you that you've got to come up with another 7,200 at the end of this to implement this plan."
So, let me address the implementation that was part of the proposal from McClure Engineering. We asked to have that included in the proposal, but not that it was included in the final price. We wanted to lock in that price, knowing that at this point in time, we are down a few staff people between the Chamber and city staff who have been working on housing. We wanted the opportunity to potentially do that in-house with some of our, some of our local staff, but knowing that in the event that we felt we couldn't do the implementation of the program, that that would be, that price would be locked in with McClure Engineering.
So what are you saying?
I just wanted to explain why that, why that price wasn't included in the, it was included in the proposal, but it's not included in the price that came before you tonight.
So, before I make an amendment to the resolution, does anybody else have questions? They want to ask Lynn first?
Could you further explain what the implementation entails?
Yeah, the implementation portion of the, of the actual proposal, if we were to do that, would be to work with developers, homeowners, homeowners to educate them on the program that would be developed as far as the incentives that would be created, then to get a company to develop the actual project. So go out and recruit a developer to bring in some additional housing, and then connect interested developers with appropriate entities to secure incentives and to build the housing. So they would really take it from concept to reality.
Basically, they would do the legwork for us.
Correct.
Other council or comments?
Lynn, question here with, I'm curious, and I think you explained it to me before, and maybe other counselors as well. What is so special or unique about McClure Engineering's experience?
So McClure Engineering is based out of Fort Dodge, and they have really found placemaking and housing as their niche in rural Iowa. They found that no one really is doing this work, but there's a lot of needs. And so that is something that, that name kept popping up in the conversations that we were having. So, they're really the expert in the field as it relates to placemaking and housing. The other interesting thing is just the connections that they have, both with current developers within the state and the potential to recruit additional developers into the state of Iowa.
I appreciate, and again, I appreciate, as Lynn said, we in the city, we know that we are down a staff member right now and the same. It does put it into another direction to go beyond just having a study to seeing it get done. And I think from, even after the tornado, we've, we had a lot of people interested in coming to look at developing or putting something together, but it really might pay to have somebody do that for us, take that off of our shoulders, because maybe that isn't our expertise. I mean, we, we know the ordinances and what we want, but maybe to overcome some barriers and to spend some time with that, I think I'm in favor of it.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this? Roll call on the amendment.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Amendment carried.
The amendment carried. Now let's have a motion to approve the matter with, as amended. We've had the motion, I guess. Anybody want to speak to that original motion now as amended? Let's do roll call on it then.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the next resolution, Wainable.
Resolution approving amended engineering services agreement for the South First Street parking lot project. Fox Engineering an increase, excuse me, of $5,800.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. The amendment before you is for some electrical engineering fees to install street, or not street lighting, but parking lot lighting within the parking lot. It was not included in Fox's original scope and with some changes coming from Alliant Energy as we coordinate with them for this project going forward. We do believe we would need the services of a electrical engineer to help us get the lighting correct for about 4,300 of the 5,800. There's 500 in there for assistance with bidding and $1,000 for assistance during construction. As always, Fox wouldn't spend the 500 or the 1,000 unless it's necessary during the work. Can I answer any questions?
Any comments or questions? Public comment? Roll call.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And our last resolution, number eight, please.
Resolution adopting the 2020 to 2021 strategic plan.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion, your questions up here?
I will just apologize. I had meant to have this printed at your desk, but I did not do double-sided copies, so I didn't have the full thing available for you. But we'll get this printed if indeed it is approved as proposed tonight. So where this kind of goes is that it puts basically at the end of the document, kind of our implementation plan in place where we hadn't seen that before or discussed that before. And so that's really these sheets here where we're really talking about what are those different things that we're doing. I did make some changes too, as we went along in Goal 2, as I started looking at some very lengthy lists of things, you know, that it really seemed like we had a few different objectives with improving the aesthetics of the community through our capital projects and then eliminating blight. So this is one area where there were some changes made from where we were last time. Otherwise, everything else is fairly consistent, but we have a lot of work ahead of us. And so if you approve this tonight, we'll, well, we're already starting some of it with volunteer recognition, but we'll continue to work on these in the deadlines that they've been assigned.
Any questions or comments?
Jessica, I do have a question. As we talked in our strategic planning, we talked about as we bring either resolutions or ordinances or discussions to the council that we could include what part of the strategic plan it related to. Do we have a plan in place to do that? I thought we reached consensus on that, but I don't know where we were going with that.
Yeah, that's, that's something internally, as each of us as departments start working on things that do come forward in action, that we will try and, in the text of a resolution, always reference a goal or objective where, where something does fit. So yes, that's something that we'll be trying to do. And another thing is, I do think we'll have some quotes on getting our mission displayed somewhere here in council chambers here in the next few weeks as well. So there's little things that we're starting to move on to make sure that we build a lot more awareness around the strategic plan.
Well, I think, for example, what Lynn brought forward, it would very easily say, we're bringing this resolution forward in our goal of increasing housing in our community so that we, it brings to mind for us that everything we're doing relates to the goals that we have set. And occasionally, we know something comes up that, that maybe gets outside the scope, but I think that that would be a great move and keep us thinking about what the, what our goals and objectives are.
Any other questions or comments up here?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Just like to mention, a lot of work went into this, a lot of give and take and so on. I would encourage the public to take a good look at this because it also points out perceived weaknesses and threats, like a good corporate strategic plan would do. I think we've done the same and been very fair and open and honest about admitting those, addressing those things, and attempting to move forward in a reasonable, progressive manner.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Carried as well. And then the last item, please.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution regarding adopting a tentative resolution for the conveyance and transfer title to Larry Lavery and Kimberly Lavery in delivery of warranty date. And this is a portion of Judge Park. The plot is included in your packet.
I will declare the public hearing open. The time is 6:28 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
I have not.
Are there any public comments? Staff review.
Yes, Mr. Lavery approached us originally about obtaining some of the additional property that is, is kind of part of Judge Park, but really is the back area to the, to the lots that are on South 12th Street there. And so the lot that is highlighted in blue is the lot that he is purchasing and planning to build a home on. And so I don't think this is actually the schematic of what we were, what we were looking at. That was just showing our, our land. What we're talking about actually conveying here is what's listed as parcel B on this survey. So he has asked if there would be additional land that could be purchased. I think something had come up about land being in floodplain. All of parcel B, he intentionally kept out of the floodplain, but he is now interested in looking at some others. So I know there's been conversations with engineering as to what, what more could be done. So this, we might be hearing from, from the Lavertys again in the near future on purchasing some additional property in this area.
Thank you. Time for council comments.
So, Your Honor, Jessica, what is the law about, where does this, when we sell land like this, and we originally owned it for park development as part of Judge Park? Am I, I mean?
I mean, when you looked at it, it was acquired from a construction company that was in the area and has been considered part of Judge Park, but not really an active part of Judge Park and not one that was maintained for really any public use.
Since it was part of Judge Park supposedly, can we use the proceeds from this to do some additions to Judge Park for the, for the people in that area? I mean, is it, can we earmark that as part of this sale, that that proceeds go to putting some equipment in Judge Park? Is that, I don't even know if that's in the master plan for Park and Rec.
Judge Park is not a priority park in the Parks and Rec master plan. And where we're at, kind of in that implementation, is focusing on priority parks. Ultimately, you can designate sale proceeds from this sale to, to any fund that you would like. There is a Parks Donation Fund where things are specifically earmarked or just left generally for Jeff to be able to utilize to fund smaller improvements in various parks. So an example that I'll give of kind of how we do this and some other things is generally any sale of a building, thinking of the fire station upcoming, that would go into funds, any proceeds would go into fund 031, which is our building maintenance fund. So you're taking proceeds from a building sale and putting it into the maintenance of other buildings that the city owns.
And land purchases, vacant lot purchases go where then?
Generally, those have been fairly small dollars that we've been talking about, and those have stayed in the general fund.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring this up is I've been approached by at least one, one resident in that neighborhood that, and I, in meeting with Jeff, I realized it's not a priority park, but if this is an opportunity, that this land was part of Judge Park and we're selling a piece of it, I was approached by this citizen in the neighborhood that there's no playground equipment in Judge Park. And maybe Judge Park wasn't originally planned to be a playground-type park. I don't know. I mean, I don't even know if Jeff would have that history on that, if it's just a, more of a memorial trailhead more than anything else. So I guess I'm, I'm looking for other input from other, I mean, do we just put it in the general fund then? I mean, is that what we normally do? That's what you say we normally do, right?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, this, this one would probably go into the general fund if there's no designation. But like I said, there is a Parks Donation Fund where...
But that would just go to the master park plan though?
Or installing sidewalks where needed and basically kind of emergency funds for, for Parks and Rec Department to access to complete projects that need to be completed that aren't budgeted.
Other council comments? I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:32. Should we invite a motion to approve the resolution? I do. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or, or public comment? Roll call.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Now we're on to item J, ordinances. Wainable, read the first one, please.
We have a public hearing followed by a third reading of an ordinance approving changes to the zoning ordinance regarding a portion of parcel down by Washington Street.
And that public hearing is started now at 6:33 PM. Did you receive any written comments in the clerk's office?
I have not received any written comments.
Are there any public comments? Time for staff review.
Yes, this is the third reading of the ordinance, so this is the third time that it has been before you. And there is an application into rezone, a 17 and 1/2 acre parcel located between 12th Street and 9th Street, where Washington Street would be a through street. So you can see that a little bit better here. So ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to approve the rezoning, and that is what's before you tonight.
Council, council comments? Public hearing is closed at 6:34 PM. Is there a motion to approve that? So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion at the council level or at the public level? Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Very good, that carried as well. Now we're on to item K, which is discussion items, and the first one of...
Would be a discussion of land trade with Marshalltown Community School District.
Yes, so I'll do some introduction on this, and I think Jeff can offer up any comment that he would like to, to offer up on or answer any questions you might have about use. This is familiar to most of you. Back in May of 2018, we first started a discussion about trading some land with the school district. Specifically, there's a parcel that they have near Bicentennial Park that was previously used for adult soccer, and we would be trading basically the ballfield area of Anson Park to the school district in exchange for that land at Bicentennial Park. And so I've included in the packet the memo that Anselnus, Parks and Rec Director at the time, had provided to you. The history then goes that this was something that the, the neighbors to Anson Park were, were not satisfied with and believed that they owned the property. And so we were wrapped up in litigation here until January, when the case is dismissed without prejudice due to a timeline issue in the case. So basically, this gets us back to the point where we were in May of 2018 and having that conversation. The school district is still interested in trading the properties, as are we, and specifically Parks and Rec. The school district has said that, at least in the near term, that they do see maintaining the ballfield as a public ballfield. And our plans would be to restore the soccer field at Bicent, or at Bicentennial Park to a soccer field and hopefully be able to get some income off of that to cover the expenses of maintenance.
Any discussion?
I'm assuming we lost out on the three and a half acre donation that was originally proposed as part of that trade? Or where does that stand?
Actually, I think I can try and bring that up. We did, we, the Gravenbowers did donate us a portion of the land that would be where the, the street kind of dead ends and you can left-turn into the park. We did get a donation there, so I don't know if I can bring it up that quickly.
So for a portion of the parcel, not the original parcel originally discussed? If that'd be accurate.
Two, two separate parcels that were not connected, but our land in the middle connects Where am I going here? There we go. So this, this parcel... Where'd I go? Yes, this parcel was the one that was donated to us, and so we do own that. This is, is Bicentennial Park, and then this is the soccer field along with where you own that little strip. So it's really this parcel, this 6.1 acre parcel that we are talking about, that would be our trade with the school district. And so it's the one that fronts Highland Acres Road. So we did add the, the property, donated property on the east side, so this would be adding property on the west side. And as you can see, it would really expand the usage as well as the footprint of Bicentennial
Other comments or questions?
Well, I just want to say that I was told I was short-sighted when we talked about tennis courts because a previous council gave up the courts and the softball diamond, the volleyball, volleyball court and the playground equipment at French. A previous council gave up the courts behind Anson Elementary. A previous council gave up West End Courts. So not wanting to be called short-sighted again, are we giving up a ball diamond that may come back into play later down the road? I know Ann's original memo says they will keep it as a ball diamond for now, but how long will that last when they don't, if they don't mow it and people can't use it, you know, it's going to disappear. I'm just throwing it out there. I understand we're getting a pretty big parcel of land in exchange, and we could even put a ball diamond out there later on, but I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, that are we doing something that we're going to regret in the future and the future council is going to come back and say, we were, you know, we're giving away ball diamonds, so...
When this came up, Gary, that was my opposition to the original proposal on the trade.
Was giving up a ball diamond?
Look at how much it's shrunk as we've taken away other diamonds in Marshalltown and where the softball association is today in participation versus where it used to be. It may not be kept up as much as it should be according to other diamonds, but it's one of the heavily, regardless of what the statement, the proposal says, it's one of the more heavily used areas to practice. used areas to practice on because we're not really supposed to or allowed to practice on the softball diamonds as they exist today when it's not for games or tournaments.
So, are you saying you're against the swap then, or are you saying...
No, I am against the swap, and the swap, and was originally against that because of the amount of other softball facilities to be able to sit there and have batting practice or anything else. For instance, we go over to St. Henry's sometimes because it's one of a few places that has use of, when you talk about the amount of other tournament teams or others such that come here for tournaments or nationals or anything else, so...
Would you be in favor, would you be in favor of the swap if we, can we put something in the language that it has to stay a softball diamond and they have to upkeep it for X number of years?
I brought that up, and that's not going to happen.
So, my conversations with the school district were that they, for the short term, have no problem maintaining it as a softball diamond for public use, but that they were not willing to commit to anything for a...
Yeah, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't have anybody here from the school tonight, right?
I don't believe so.
I have a question on... The lawsuit was dismissed without prejudice, which leaves the door open to reactivate that, correct?
They can file new litigation against us, but that case was dismissed. And so, ultimately, they certainly have that opportunity to continue to do because that was never brought to an end resolution that clearly said whose property that was.
But it was dismissed without prejudice, which to me means that it, we got lawyers sitting over here, that they can re-initiate that, and I'm not sure who dismissed it to start with.
It was dismissed by the courts because it missed a, it extended beyond a procedural timeline. So, it was not dismissed by the Georges who brought the litigation against us, and so, it was dismissed by the courts.
Roger, are we open?
It was a dismissal without prejudice, which means that the suit could be filed again.
Would it be filed against us if we swap? Would it be filed against the school?
Well, I'm not sure where the land is we're talking about. If we no longer have the land, if the land's been swapped to the school, it's, they're dealing with the school then at that point.
But would we be negligent later on if we didn't prove that we owned the land in the first place to swap it?
Well, we think we own the land to begin with, and I mean, it was the parties who brought the lawsuit who claimed that they had a claim. They don't hold a deed to the land or anything of that sort. Their deed does not include that land, but they claimed a right of usage by some prescriptive right.
Ultimately, if the George family would like to bring litigation against us, they certainly can. The previous lawsuit is basically done and over with, which basically used about two years of time and ended up with no result either way. So, we're, it is our land. We have every document that shows that it's never been in anybody else's name, so it is your right if you want to trade it. They can certainly still bring litigation against us again, and perhaps we'd come to the conclusion that all of us wanted to come to this last time, which was a judgment one way or the other.
Can we ask Jeff to come up to the podium?
Don't hurry.
Yeah, don't hurry with your knee. I don't play softball anymore. We used to practice at Anson. Talk to me. I mean, do we need this softball diamond? And are you guys keeping it up? I mean, I'm hearing conflicting things, and it's, it's not, I know it has a bad outfield, you know, right field goes down about 50 feet, you know, it seems like when you're out there, but, I mean, is this a legitimate practice field we'd be giving up for organized softball? And would this kind of hurt us for bringing tournaments if we don't, we're giving up a practice field?
Sure. Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director, I remember Bicentennial as a kid. It had a ball field out there, and we played out there, and now there isn't one there now either. And, you know, you've talked, the point of numbers are dwindling in softball. That's not just in Marshalltown, that's all over the country. In Sioux City and Council House where I were, there used to be 100 teams that played softball, and now they're down to 50 or 40 or whatever. So, it is going down. It would be nice to have one, as long as they maintain it. And like I said, there is space out there. We could build a field out there if the school district decided to do something with it. In the times that I've been past West End or Anson, I've never seen much use of it except for maybe a couple of people out playing catch. I've never seen a full-blown practice at either location, so I can't speak to the use of them in the nights and the weekends of what teams are using them. I think they'd be more used for youth teams using it for practices just because of the size and the condition of the field.
So, you're in favor of the swap?
I'm okay because I think we're getting more land and more available use. It connects our park to some other things. I think having a soccer field for use for the public to use rather than the association's complex would get a lot of use, so I'm okay with it.
Jeff, you don't maintain that field, infield part of that field. You probably mow it, but you don't maintain that infield.
We do, but we probably drag it, you know, once every two weeks, once a month, depending on, you know, how much use. And if our mower goes out and sees that, you know, there's a lot of tracks in it, they may go out and do something sooner, but we regularly did do the infills at West End and Anson this summer. And we have a contract with somebody to mow Bicentennial and Anson now, so it'd be easy for us to just, he's doing both parks right now to take off however many acres it is for the ballfield, adding a few acres to Bicentennial and have that same contractor mow both parks.
Other discussion? Public comment?
Thanks, Jeff.
Anna Wolvers, I don't know much about it, but it sounds like you guys are thinking that it could still be used as a sports complex. However, in the watch group, Mr. Eaton posted on there, "A soccer field that could be sold by the school to a housing developer that the school supposedly has a buyer for. Would said sale not help fund the tennis court project and support housing development? The appraiser's report said the better use of the property would be for housing. What exactly do you think 'for the immediate future' means in the terms of a timeframe? Five minutes, five years, or..." So, it sounds like you guys are trying to keep it for sports complex, but maybe the school has other plans. I don't know intelligibly, but I know Mr. Eaton would speak if he was around, I'm sure. So, he put that publicly, so I don't think he minds that I share now.
Jessica, have we had contact with the school about this?
Yes, I mean, the memo that's in the packet was proofed by them as well to make sure it wasn't stating anything that was not in line with what they had said. And so, the school district has said that they're still on board with the trade. I wouldn't have brought this forward to you if they weren't.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, let's go on to the next discussion item.
That's where I'm looking for, is this something that you want to move forward with? And if there, I mean, if you want to make a motion in a second, I guess I'm not too clear on where everybody's at at this point.
Well, I'd entertain a motion to move forward on it.
I'm on record as opposing this based on the lawsuit. I think, if I could, Your Honor, I think that's probably been my stance all along with the lawsuit, and I still have some questions of the rebound, and also, some of that was answered with, let's just trade it and get rid of the litigation against the city. Second of all, I think I asked Jessica if another lawsuit is brought up, if our insurance company would actually take that over as a new case. I'm just at the point of how much money are we going to, are we going to spend for this $6,000 piece of ground and to trade? So, at this point, I would be against that trade.
I already opposed my opposition. The only other thing I'll add to that is we just had done some revamping and some additional money into Anson Park to make it something else. So, is this portion of that a detriment to what Anson Park is? And we want to leave it as a playground only, or do we want to make it one of the, another staple park, which has had a large amount of money and time and effort put into it to make it something more than what it was beforehand? So, we put the money into it, and then we shrink it. I don't know if that makes sense either.
Sue, can I put you on the spot? Help the new council member?
I have, often at Woodbury School, we have people playing soccer out on the fields there. And I know we don't have a lot of public soccer fields. We have our Futsal Courts on 13th Street, and I have seen people playing soccer out in Bicentennial Park on the ground out there. I think that the soccer fields, public soccer fields are a valid part of our park plan. So, I would be for the switch to increase the soccer fields available for play.
Well, again, if there is a motion to move forward, we will take a vote on it, and if there's no motion, we will not give...
Can I make a motion the other way to not proceed with the swap?
You may.
Then, Your Honor, I'd make a motion, from what I'm hearing tonight, that we not move forward with the swap with the school district in spite of Jeff and Sue. I'm sorry, but...
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion up here or out there?
So, what's your motion based on?
Not to tell, to instruct city staff not to pursue this at this time, that we are going to keep Anson. Ball diamond is our ownership and let the school do whatever they want to do with their portion of the land out there, that we're not interested in the swap.
Ready for a count? Let's do the roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Motion carried to deny.
Next discussion item is the TIF reimbursement transfer to the Coliseum renovation.
Yes, so quite some time ago, we did talk about how we received a $140,000 reimbursement from our insurance company for architecture and design fees for the Coliseum, but those were already paid for with some TIF dollars from the downtown urban renewal area. And so, you requested that those be placed back into the TIF fund for the time being. So, that move happened, and ultimately, once, now that we have the bids back, construction is underway, we're here before you tonight to ask for you to redesignate those, that $140,000 to the Coliseum fund. So, the way that we can do that is, you know, these were kind of funds made a little bit more restrictive by moving them back to the TIF fund. However, the downtown urban renewal plan does list the Coliseum renovation as a project where TIF funds can be used. So, and because these are on hand and not something new, it would not require, I don't believe it would require a public hearing, that it would just require a simple resolution of the council to designate those funds. So, as you can see, we have the city sources that were needed to kind of fill the gap of the city, the city cash on hand to be used for the Coliseum project. The resolution to designate the insurance proceeds from the Senior Citizen Center was approved, which leaves a remaining deficit of almost $128,000. I'm recommending that you transfer the entire amount to the Coliseum renovation fund of $140,000. We're expecting change orders. We're still very early in this process, and so, ultimately, having just a little bit of a cushion there will not hurt anything right now, still being very early on in the project.
Can you bring me up to speed? Where was the shortfall originally going to, it was going to come from TIF? That was your plan anyway, right? The shortfall was going to come from TIF?
That was one of the recommended sources. And so, beyond this, there are other, as Diana will get to in the budget process, there are other funds on hand in the downtown TIF fund, which, as we see likely change orders, that those can be, you know, you could designate more tax increment financing, or you can designate local option sales tax. But at least with this designation, it would get us to the point where the basic thing that we needed you all to do, which was to basically plug our hole that needed to be plugged with a city source, would be done, and the rest we'd be talking about would just be related to any change orders that came forward.
Any comments or questions up here?
I'm strongly in favor of doing the TIF to get the project done. That's a very important project, and whatever it takes to get it done.
I would entertain that as a motion.
If we're, yeah, if we're going a motion direction yet, that was just a discussion to start.
If I heard Mr. Martin, Martin's reaction, that was probably a second?
Second.
Discussion up here. Public discussion.
Again, I am not an expert in TIF. Anna Wolvers, Marshalltown resident, second ward. But one would ask, is there a state code that allows the city to use TIF money for a municipal project? The project, the Coliseum, cannot repay the TIF debt. And as a tax-paying citizen, hearing money go here, there, and everywhere and lawsuit worthiness, something to consider.
I think the administrator has answered that question already.
Yeah, any question to that I would direct you to, I do believe what we do have, Urban Renewal Area Number Four Plan posted on our website. We listed the public library in there. We listed a whole bunch of possible public projects in there, knowing that we had some things to do in the downtown area, and that ultimately, if it wasn't listed in the plan, it wasn't going to give you the authority to be able to use dollars.
Let's vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No, just because I don't like TIF.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. The staff has its direction there. On to the next discussion item, which is Chapter 76 Traffic Schedules of the Code of Ordinances.
Yes, we have an amendment that we need to do to the traffic, Chapter 76 Traffic Schedules, based on there being stop signs now at the intersection of First Avenue and Church Street. Those are not listed in the ordinance. They need to be added in. And so, I've got kind of two options for you to consider, with the first being that we would do the amendment of Chapter 76, but also look at what other signage that is regulated in these schedules, which would include yield signs, stop signs, as well as traffic signals. What is currently listed, and is it correct? Because we have found some errors here recently. Ultimately, when we had things recodified, those schedules were not examined and reviewed by the recodification company. So, but one of the things that we have had is a sign inventory that was completed over the summer, which would hopefully make this an easier review to complete than it would have a year before. So, that's kind of option one, is to keep things as they are, but make sure that we're reviewing data to ensure that it's correct before we'd bring forward any sort of amendment for you to complete. Option two would be to consider eliminating the schedules for stop sign, yield signs, and traffic signals, and move forward with the council process to bring those forward to you by resolution. Ultimately, that brings forward any Public Works Department recommendations much sooner, as well as citizen recommendations. And while you have been willing to waive readings of ordinances to make things move a little bit faster, we see that this is an area where some efficiencies could be gained. We would put whatever this would be in a formal policy to be adopted by resolution of the council, so it's not that this becomes just a willy-nilly, everybody does what they want to type of thing, that you still ultimately have the final say. And one of the specific things in talking about traffic signals and looking at our purchasing policy, most traffic signals are going to, or a traffic signalization project is going to get into an area where it's well above the $135,000 that would require it to be a Chapter 26 construction project under Iowa code. So, that would be something where typically, those are going to have to come to you anyways because they'll require a public hearing and things in order to be implemented. So, that's kind of the proposal here. Before we went one step, I wanted, or one direction, I wanted to give you a potential other direction, and so, I'm looking for some feedback on which way you would like us to proceed.
Is there a preferred option from city staff? I mean, I know the second option says it streams on the process, but then in addition, that it adds cost to the publication and... I mean, I know the second option says it streams on the process, but then in addition, that it adds cost to publication and time before something can be published. So, I mean, it's, the second option, the way you talked about it, would be the easier, more straightforward option?
It is. You know, it's, that is something to consider, is that every time you do approve an ordinance, you do have to publish the ordinance before it's effective and you publish the ordinance in its entirety. Typically, if it's a new ordinance, I think with an amendment like this, we just publish what the, the small amendment would be. But those are, those are costs that we have. That's also a time delay in doing something. As the city clerk had mentioned at a previous meeting, an ordinance is not effective until it has been published, whereas a resolution is effective as soon as Mayor Greer says, yes, I'll sign that. So there, there's kind of a difference in timelines there as well, where one, we're dependent upon the, the Times Republican and the second, we're dependent upon the mayor's actions. So either way is fine, I think, is, is we're all looking at how we do things a little bit more efficiently. Option two is probably the, the more efficient route. But the first option of doing things as we have been is perfectly fine as well.
Jessica, excuse me, Jessica, if we went to the resolution route, would we lose a published list of controlled intersections that the public would have access to? Like now it's in the ordinance. It lists every intersection.
So one of the things that we're, I mean, one of the things that you could do to remedy that is you would have a, an initial resolution where you adopt every existing location, basically, by ordinance, so that there was, you know, sort of a transition into that process, so that there would be a council record that would exist for any questions moving forward.
But it wouldn't be accessible by the public, like the, like the ordinances are, to see the list?
Yeah, it, it would. I mean, or we, we are not taking anything down off of our website, off of council agendas or anything like that. We haven't really gotten into public accessibility of the sign inventory. It's a GIS data layer. It's going to be used by our employees who are managing the signs. I would assume that we could make that a public data layer with probably, that would be something to talk about with, with engineering and probably with Bolton and Mink, who's kind of managing our GIS stuff right now.
Can I ask Councilor Hoop a question? You were against us waiving the second and third reading on the speed change on.
12th.
12th, 12th Street. Okay, if we go to a resolution format, you're not going to have public opportunity for three readings if we put a stop sign at the end of their street. I mean, what, what was your rationale? I mean, I guess I'm asking, you were against us waiving the, the three readings on a speed limit change. How do you feel about controlled intersections?
It would probably be the same situation.
You'd be against that. So you, so you're saying you'd like to stay at the ordinance level?
That would probably be my first, unless I get talked out of it.
And a sidebar for the public, you're not the only ones that break laws, okay? Because it is an ordinance right now, we, as a city government, violated our own law by removing the stoplights at that intersection and replacing them with stop signs. It has to go through an ordinance for any controlled intersection. So be aware that we're just as guilty as, as you are for burning milk cartons in your backyard and your trash barrel and, and throwing leaves in the street in the storm sewer. But I guess, for, you know, again, I'm getting back to that transparency. One of the things, we just adopted the strategic plan. One of the things the taxpayers want is better communication, more transparency. I would like to see it stay as an ordinance, because it gives the opportunity for three different readings. It, it stops us from putting, you know, just rushing through some things. And again, controlled intersections are probably, you know, not the, the hot topics, but it is to somebody that lives on that street. So I guess my feeling would be stay with the ordinance. But at the very least, we need to get this one on the, if we stay with the ordinance, we need to get this one on the list that, that we remove the stoplight and change it to a stop sign.
So I guess my only question and clarification would be, I don't know, over the last few years, I mean, how many have we even had to do from a necessary amendment to chapter 76? Doesn't sound familiar, right? So we have this one, but how common is it that it really makes that big of a difference?
I don't know that we've had any changes probably since I've been here for three years. I don't know if there's been anything further than that. So it's, it's not very often.
Probably, the last one was probably Cooper Lane up in that area, that South Point development. Was, would they think that was the newest one, that we put a stop sign at the, the entrance to that housing project that, when they went out on Sixth Street?
And I don't know that this, I mean, that, that was more than a few years ago. But yeah, I don't know when the updating process of this was happening as, you know, new streets were being put in or requests were coming in from citizens in the past and being considered. So that's where I really do think the data review is going to be a very important thing to accomplish, because I, I, we have evidence that what we have on, on file currently is, is not correct. And when it's not correct, before the stop signs were put in at First Avenue and Church Street.
Gabe, were you asking that because the cost is negligent and if we don't do this very often?
Why change something if we barely touch it? I mean, no offense to anybody else, this is a waste of my time tonight, if it's happened one time in the last three years. So I, I will make a, a motion to proceed with the first option, which is the existing, I mean, you need a resolution to proceed with the existing resolution as it is today, or option one. I make a resolution or a motion to adopt option one, as I guess the standard procedure for any amendments to chapter 76.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any other discussion up here?
What?
Correct.
Yes, leaving it as it, we're just going to amend, I'm sorry, go ahead, Gabe.
No, that's fine. I would, it's, the motion is to leave it as is.
Yeah, he's, basically, we got to fix our problem on First Avenue and Church Street and then leave the ordinance as it is, that it's an ordinance for controlled intersections.
We still have to get to a budget and a closed session tonight. So in the, in the thought of trying to speed this up, let's just take a vote on that motion.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And onto the last discussion item, the four-year '21 budget.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. There's a lot of information for you tonight. I'm going to hit on some highlights. So we'll start with the special revenue funds. So these are donations or grants or specific property tax levies that we have to drop into a special revenue fund and then transfer back to the general fund. That included the employee benefit fund, which I shared with you earlier, and the police and fire retirement fund. I also shared that with you when we were talking about the general fund, how to make that whole. I've also went over the local option sales tax and the road use tax, so we will not cover those tonight. So the first one we're going to talk about is the emergency fund. So if you recall, when we were talking about the property tax levy, we went ahead and took the maximum eight, eight-ten levy for the regular general fund, and then we also took the 27 cent emergency fund. So that's where this drops into, is this Fund 119. Drops in there and then we transfer it to the general fund. If you notice on your cash sheet that I handed out, you can kind of see the activity that's going to happen. So this is, column C is actually your ending cash balance at the end of June of 2019. And then we're showing you your revised net budget, the revenues minus expenses for fiscal year '20. And then where we are projecting to be for the end of this fiscal year. And then the activity for FY '21 and where we're projecting to be at the end of this, based on that budget. So on Fund 119, you'll see there's a small balance, that's $6,640. So that's for backfill that we put in the budget as getting. The governor did put it in her budget, but the state has not appropriated it yet. So if we do end up getting this, we will put it, we will put it to the general fund, which will reduce our local option sales tax council designated, which you said you would contribute to make the general fund whole. The next one I'd like to talk about is the TIF fund. So you can kind of see the cash balance here, how that all plays out. And I have a spreadsheet for you. If I can find it. Maybe it got closed. So again, here's our June 30th balance here, and it's split, divided by the different TIF areas, TIF 2, 3, 4, 5. So every November, we certify what we want the county to collect for us. So the, in fiscal, this current fiscal year, we have $636,000 that we've asked them to collect. We did transfer $6,875,000 that we ended up not needing, so we'll be transferring that back this year. And here's your $140,000 we just talked about, that got transferred from the tornado fund back to the Coliseum, and we have some interest. And then what you did have me certify for, with the county was the bond funds. And we also talked about that when we talked about the debt service fund, how different money comes from different areas. So not only do we levy for the debt service fund, but also we back the money off from TIF or from sewer revenue bonds. So this is the TIF portion. So these three bonds have a portion of that. And then these are the development agreements. So we have some with Hawkeye Hotels, Menards, Tyson's, Plum Supply, Bobcat Academy. So again, these are agreed upon ahead of time. We have an agreement with Marshall, Marshalltown Central Business District, Main Street, $30,000. The Red Earth Real Estate Holdings, there is no amount here. That's part of the TIF number five Eagleview area. They have not did what they're supposed to so far, so we haven't paid them anything. So we also had some other money spent out of this fund through the year, simmering for the Iowa codification. The Chamber, we set up that new incentive grant for $250,000, which is $50,000 a year. We did Shane Eckler demo, Garrett Goodman demo, and then the facade grants that were brought forth to you. The remaining balance for the facades is $22,635, which we expect to spend this year. And then here's your $140,000 you just talked about. So it's going to go back out to Fund, to the Coliseum Fund. And then this is just a correction from a prior year between the two different TIFs. So at the end of this year, here's your balances, $415,000 total. And then last November, we certified $650,362 to the county for these projects. So we have the bond payments, we have additional facade, $40,000, the Chamber for $50,000, and our development agreements. So also on this sheet is Fund 126, which is the low and moderate income. So when we certified this amount, 41.79% could come in to the LMI for the city to spend for low and moderate income housing. Is there any questions on the TIF fund?
Diana, how do we spend that low and moderate income? Can you bring me up to speed real quick? Is it for, is it for housing projects?
It's, I mean, it, it doesn't have to be specifically for housing projects. It has to be for something that supports low to moderate income housing. So it could be a tangible project, a payment to a developer. It could be, you know, neighborhood improvements in, in an area where it's a verified low to moderate income. It could be contributed towards the lead projects, the lead program, that type of thing. So there's a, a lot of uses, but there's not been any sort of council designation for where to use it at.
Later, can I get with you to show me those maps that show those neighborhoods?
I don't know that I would have access to those. There were some things that were developed a few years ago when we had a neighborhood revitalization program prior to the tornado, where we were looking at a few different things. With Michelle being out, I'm not sure where those would be at this point in time, so.
I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. So the other area you want to talk about is the tornado funds, which is, the primary one is Fund 145. So what was running through there was both the insurance company reimbursements for city property damage and also the cleanup of the community, which we then submitted to FEMA. So except for the, the street repairs, pretty much all the other expenses are done. But the revenue is probably not going to come in until fiscal year '21, '22, '22, '23. We don't know when it will come, but when budgeting, I went ahead and put it in there, so it would zero out. So we will, we have gotten some money this year. Hopefully, the rest of it will come next year, but it could be delayed. The only other one I really wanted to comment on is that we did receive the lead grant in the spring of 2019. So when we did our budget reestimate, we did put those costs back in. Any questions on any of the special revenue funds?
Getting back to FEMA, you're not going to get, the audit's not going to say anything about how you budget that FEMA money, not knowing when it's going to come in, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next category, which is the capitals. Again, I'm not going to go over every project, but I'll kind of hit some highlights. So when we were talking about the capital improvement plan, which you have now approved, this is another scenario where you levy the 67 and a half cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuations. It drops into Fund 300, and then as we spend it out of Fund 030, we move, we transfer the money. So we either transfer it to 030 or 032, which is the large vehicle equipment, AKA the fire trucks. Some other projects I wanted to mention was Fund 354, the police and fire station. So we know that not all that money is spent, but not knowing how much may be spent yet this year, we went ahead and showed it as being spent out. We'll still need to come back to the council if there's any change orders or any other ways that we would want to spend that money. But it does give us the authority to spend it in case of the settlement or anything like that. So that's how that one plays out. So likely what will happen, well, there will be some money at the end of this fiscal year. We don't know how much. So I just went ahead and spent it. The bonds for this year that you just approved, the issuance of in December, these are the projects in three, Fund 360. So it's the Timber Creek Bridge replacement, Anson Park Shelter, Weston Park, East Merle Hibs, and the sidewalk projects. And then we talked about future bonding, so I split that up between two funds. One is Fund 361, which is the library addition. So estimated cost is $1,675,000. $500,000 we said we could bond for, and the remaining would come from donations. Again, any bonding would have to come back to council and have to go through this whole process. But just for budgeting purposes, we're going to go ahead and put the expenses and the revenue in there. And then the other fund was Three, Fund 362, which covers all the other bond items that you discussed several weeks ago. And then the Coliseum remodel is in Fund 383. So do you have any specific questions on the capitals? Okay, we'll go on. Last one is going to be the enterprise funds. So again, these are run-like businesses, since we charge fees. The only one that is supplemented is the transit, and they need a little bit of money, which we levy for. and they need a little bit of money, which we levy for. And then we tried to keep it at the end, so there'd be a $50,000 fund balance there in case of major bus repairs. So, you're probably all familiar with Water Pollution Control Plant, storm sewer, composting concessions. And then we did have some tornado funds related to those as well. So, again, we're submitting those to FEMA. So, when I, after we're done gathering all the information, I'll be putting these on the budget forms for the next meeting in two weeks. And then that will also include Marshalltown Water Works, because they are, they are part of our budget cycle. They're going to be having their hearing next week, so their budget should be finalized. So, do you have any questions or have any suggested changes? Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to the public comment section. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes, so others may speak, but I can authorize longer comments. The speaker shall not, direct comments to the mayor and to the council, shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on them in order to comply with the open meetings laws. Is there anyone who would like to approach the mic?
Good evening all. My name is Nan Benson, and I'm here as the Iowa River Hospice Board President. And because I sympathize with you all that you've got to go into closed session, I'll try to keep this very brief. We did have some handouts for you, but we'll email those to you tomorrow instead. So, I'm just going to read a letter that we've prepared and wanted to share information with you all. At the October 1 Rotary Meeting, City Administrator Jessica Kinzer and City Engineer Justin Nickel did a nice presentation about the East Merle Hibs project. The map that was used showed a new road connecting Plaza Heights Road to a new section of Merle Hibs. That road is South Fifth Avenue, and is drawn, would go directly through the Iowa River Hospice property. It would require us to relocate the generator, a small building, and reconfigure our ambulance entrance. We did hear of this plan, just because one of our employees attended the Rotary that day. A meeting was requested with Jessica, and we did meet with her. Emily Carson, the executive director, attended. Rhonda Miller, who is the Iowa River Hospice Community Liaison, myself as the board president, and Lucas Badke as a board member. Jessica expressed the city's intention to purchase 30 feet of the Iowa River Hospice property, and asked for additional property during the construction, so an easement, a construction easement. She said if we cooperate, the city would assist us when paying for soundproofing, you know, trying to make it more private, moving the generator, some other things. However, if we did not cooperate, the assistance from the city would not be available. Jessica further stated, if we were unwilling to sell, the city could take this property by eminent domain. Nan Benson did express at that meeting that the hospice board, and this was previous to my time on the board, was approached several years ago, asking for this easement, and it was declined citing reasons of privacy, safety, security, and respect for the nature of our work and those that are needing our peaceful setting. Our decision not to sell or grant use of the property has not changed. We feel strongly that the current plan is to extend South Fifth Avenue on our property by invoking eminent domain or near our property lined by building on or near the current residential street cading properties has put in for their development would be a detriment to our peaceful setting. The hospice home opened in the summer of 2009 due to a large donation from Midlander's estate. Mid felt strongly that we needed the additional level of comfort care that only a hospice home can provide. A feasibility study supported the idea, and a fundraising campaign quickly reached the goal of 2.3 million needed to build the home. We feel very accountable to our generous donors who've supported our mission since 1983. The hospice home was fully funded, and they continue, folks continue to support us to this day. We are local, and we are a nonprofit. Building the road or even alongside our land would be a huge detriment to the safety, security, and tranquility of our property. There, and there is, you know, talk of the north-south road connecting the new Merle Hibs to the South Third Avenue is what we're hoping for rather than South Fifth. So, looking at an option of maybe using South Third is a different option. The option wasn't considered in your recent goal setting. I believe that was Goal 1 in your strategic plan, but I glanced at it very quickly, so I apologize for that. I think it was Objective 4. So, securing the land, and so, South Fifth was the only option. We're just asking that you look into another option. The Third Avenue is already partially built and would keep traffic from coming all the way down the Plaza Heights Road. Currently, there's a lot of street parking there, and there are a lot of families with young children. And with the increased traffic with the cading addition, we struggle with some visibility issues on that street. I promise I'm almost done. And there have been a few near misses, children unfortunately darting out between the cars and those types of things. And unfortunately, the drivers coming to and from Hospice House have many issues weighing on their minds. Increased traffic from Third Avenue to the cul-de-sac and Fifth would be a huge concern. It is certainly disappointing that we heard of this intent to build at a public presentation. However, you know, we're here to express our concern, and we just want you to listen and hopefully look at other options as well. We respectfully request that the council seriously consider other options, not just South Fifth Avenue. Signed, Nan Benson, Iowa River Hospice Board President, and Emily Carson, Iowa River Hospice Executive Director. And as I said, I will email the map that you've probably all seen a million times and this letter to you, so you have that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We can't ask questions, Nan, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for listening.
Anna Wolfers again, and I'm kind of glad I listened to her first, because mine is, that's a perfect segue. As a resident off of South Third Avenue on a busy S-curve thing, I've mentioned it before, but we, and you mentioned ordinances and breaking laws and all of that. And I've told Chief Tepper, they could make a month's income in about three hours, just sitting anywhere along South Third Avenue. Mentioning near misses and children, you have three schools along South Third Avenue. You have Anson, you have Hoagland, and you have the high school. I'm in between most of them. There was a massive two-car wreck there a weekend ago on the ice. Lonnie Hoagland has pictures on his site. One lost a door. It was like a head-on. I called the police. And I personally just had a tow truck rear-end me on that same corner on Thursday. The posted speed limit sign is 25. On average, I don't know, I would think it's a grandpa driving if anyone actually drove 25 on that road. I could probably count on both hands all day long how many people actually go 25 for safety there. The average, I would rough guess, is 40 or above on that crazy S-curve. And my neighbors up South Third Avenue on the brown house, they lost a garage about four years ago, because people went through that curve. So, safety concerns is huge there. Even when I'm shoveling on my busy driveway, there's a lot of near misses of people just coming around, especially at night, being crazy drivers. So, if you increase even more people on that, you definitely need to enforce the speed limit there for safety.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, the time is 7:29, and we need to go into a closed session regarding real estate under Section 21.5, Subsection 1, P. R. N. J. of the Iowa Code, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price. The government body would have to pay for that, or reduce the price the government body would receive for that property. The city of Marston has an attorney-client relationship with Rogers Shell and with Lynch Dallas by resolutions. And...